Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting this evening. Seeing we have no, let me get to my spot here, sorry folks. We don't have anyone for the open forum for their first 15 minutes, so would everybody please, if you're able, to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, for all.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
I would like to ask to state a point of personal privilege.
Your point is granted.
Okay. It's a point of personal privilege because this is, you know, we had an election, November the 8th, and it was a good election, I'm just talking locally, okay? It was really a great election, we had a great turnout, and we have some good news. Our mayor, Debbie Gotel, was elected to serve as our Commissioner, Hennepin County, District 5. And I want to make a couple of comments about that. You know, Debbie, I think when she first said she was going to run, you know, a lot of people said, "There ain't no way." But I think there's a lot of folks that really underestimated the mayor and the work and the experience and the education and the issues and her knowledge that she brought forth. They did. And the other thing they really underestimated is the woman knows how to work. She was tireless. She was tireless, I'm telling you, you know? I'd call her on the phone and she'd say, "Well, I'm busy door knocking in Eden Prairie." Or, you know, "I'm over here at a meeting, the League of Women Voters, in Bloomington." Or, you know, "I'm talking to these folks over here at the seniors at a certain apartment building." She was all over the place. She worked hard. And the one thing that I want to really highlight is that she really had a very, very positive Because she believes in civility, in public debate and in public discourse. Civility is missing from our campaigns and our political parties, and that's a shame. Because we live in a democracy and we should honor everyone's vote. But I really have to hand it to her, you know? She really worked hard, she focused on the issues, she focused on the positive, and the other thing that Debbie had going for her is, when she first ran for mayor, I managed her first campaign, and one of the things that I told her, I said, "You have to, you have to give me your word that you're going to do what I ask." And one of that is, you're going to be a leader. You're not going to sit on the dais and run the meeting and cut a ribbon. You're going to have to learn the issues, you're going to have to show where you are on the issues, you're going to have to ask questions, you're going to have to really dig deep, find out what's going on, work with a lot of different people in the community, with the city staff, you know, with, with all of us that are stakeholders in this community. But most important, I said, "You've got to be a regional player. You have to be at the table. You have to be at the table with the League of Minnesota Cities, with the Minnesota Municipalities Group, with the Metropolitan Council, with Hennepin County. And if we have something before the state legislature, you have to be able to sit at that table with whatever legislator is presenting a bill on behalf of Richfield, and you not only have to advocate for it, you have to persuade, and you have to fight, and you have to be armed with everything that you've got." And that also includes, you know, when you go to the state legislature, you just don't work with your legislators. You also make the rounds and talk to other legislators or staff people. You also make sure that all your bases are covered when you're working with other agencies. And you also, you also make sure that, excuse me, that your voice is going to be heard. And you do it with a lot of reasoned persuasion with, because you've got the facts. And, you know, lo and behold, I knew Debbie had the ability, and I knew that she would do her job in that regard. And she has brought home a number of awards to the city, and she has said, when she's brought home these awards, presenting them, and she said, "You know, this isn't an award that I brought myself. This is an award that I accept on behalf of our city council, on behalf of our staff, and on behalf of the citizenry of Richfield. Because we are stronger together." I've heard that before. But, you know, she had five council members, all of us, well, you supported yourself, but she had our four council members that, without batting an eye, without thinking, that immediately said, "Yes, we support you." So she's going to be moving up to Hennepin County Commissioner, and she's going to be doing one heck of a good job. We believe in her and we trust in her, that she's going to deliver. And we know one thing about Debbie is that she's fair. The day after the election, I called her. "You know what? She was at a meeting in Eden Prairie." And I said, "Hey, the election's over, you won." And she said, "Yeah, but, you know, these folks are meeting and they want to get their viewpoint." And I said, "Okay." So she's going to be representing Eden Prairie and Bloomington, and she's going to be fair, and she's going to be inclusive, and she's going to know their issues, and she's going to know their cities, and she's going to know the players on their council and their staffs. And she's going to be doing, you know, newsletters, and she's going to be doing town meetings, because that's her nature. And one of the things that, you know, we will miss her, and, you know, once in a while, you know, she gives me the heavy-duty stuff to present, so, you know, I always tease her. But we will miss her, because she's really had an impact in Richfield. She has changed the face of Richfield. She's everywhere, she listens to everybody. And she has really, you know, whenever you've seen her, I don't know how many State of the City messages that she has delivered, but she has, she has done so, and it's been really an honor to serve with her and to work with her, because she knows what it takes to bring a community together and to bring a progressive agenda and to push it forward. So I will let my other brothers here speak too, but I want to say to you, Debbie, it is heartfelt, sincere congratulations. We're proud of you, and we love you, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you. Thank you, dear. Thank you, appreciate that, appreciate that.
Well, it's a tough act to follow. And Councilmember Garcia, you know, she still has another meeting left, so...
That's right, we should be nice.
I must admit, I was saving some of my kudos, but I'll, so I'll just say briefly that, of course, congratulations. You know, often, when somebody leaves to take another office, the phrase is, you know, someone's loss is another person's gain. But in this instance, Hennepin County's gain is also Richfield's gain, and I think we know for certain that you will continue to fight hard for the people of Richfield, you will fight hard for people of Bloomington, Eden Prairie, and a better way in Hennepin County as well. So I'm going to save some of my kudos for the finale, if you will, in December, but congratulations and well deserved.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, this is going to be a hard act to follow, both of you. I don't know if she remembers, first time I met her was down at the farmer's market, and you were thinking about running for mayor and that, and you said you were going to do it, and you fulfilled that promise, you did it and did more than that, you became mayor. So it was kind of interesting meeting you then and meeting you now, a totally different person to the good, really energetic and that, and I know you do a lot of work.
Yeah.
A lot of work people don't see, a lot of meetings they, people never hear of, so we're going to miss that, but I know going to the county, you're going to help Richfield.
Oh, yeah.
Because we've had issues with the roads and all that, and I think you're going to be on our side for that one. So I'm glad to see you there, so, and I'll give more at your final day when we do the big one. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's all get up and congratulate our new Commissioner.
Well, you know, I'm not sure how this is going to work, because Steve gave me this long list of things he expects me to get done before I sign that final day. And he says, "The only time he'll accept my resignation is an hour before my swearing-in ceremony," because he's got me booked that far out. So, no, thank you. You know, it's bittersweet, I got to tell you, it's been 10 years here, and it's going to, it's coming, I'm feeling it now, leaving this council chambers and these wonderful people and everything, it's going to be hard, it's going to be difficult. I can't tell you, this is probably the best job I've ever had. It's wonderful being a city mayor, and those people who we see up in the legislature who have been mayors before, they really get it, they really understand it, and I applaud, you know, anybody who appoints people who have first been city mayors, so they know what it's like on the ground game in their own neighborhoods, and that really matters. And I won't forget that, I'm a suburban mayor, and that's the voice I'm going to bring to that county seat, so. And, yeah, I'll be out everywhere, I'll be down in Eden Prairie these days a lot more. Thank you for that, I really appreciate your nice comments. At this time, I'd ask the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting for October 25th, 2016.
Come on.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have annual presentations, we have two presentations this evening. We have the annual meeting of the Community Service Commission, and Reed, I believe you're here, missing your meeting. Reed Bornhold, please, give us your annual report, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, yeah, tough act, thanks a lot. Congratulations.
Thank you.
My name's Reed Bornhold, I'm current Chair of the Community Services Commission, I'm here to deliver some highlights of what we've done the past year. Among them are, we've heard and discussed ideas for the continued partnership with the Three Rivers Park District, including the Richfield Parkway Bike Corridor and other proposed improvements at Roosevelt and Taft Parks. We heard a summary of smart ideas from one of our commission members, Art Feldgate, regarding ways to incorporate this smart technology into the city infrastructure. We also heard and discussed some updates from the Public Works regarding the Emerald Ash Borer Control, alternative park plantings, street projects, and now we will be looking at Gypsy Moth also, very soon. We discussed options for the park entrance signs and provided some guidance and ideas of these signs, and I think tonight we're going to have our final proposal for your consideration. We also approved the revised bylaws of the Community Services Commission to make them more consistent with those of the council and the other advisory groups and commissions. Approved an administrative policy to monitor the placement of geocaches in the parks.
Oh, cool.
We also discussed updates to an outdated totlot area in Donaldson Park, which hopefully will come to fruition here soon. Sent representatives to the Open Streets Penfest to promote participation in the commissions and all the boards. We reviewed final plans and received updates on the stormwater drainage improvements impacting Monroe Park. We also continued to gather information about organized garbage collection and are monitoring, as all of us are, monitoring the status of other similar efforts in places like Bloomington. We proposed, or prioritized, prioritized, proposed capital projects and recommended the approval of our annual capital improvement plan to the council. And we also appointed, thankfully, some new members and returning members to the Friends of Woodlake or Fowl Board, it's always good to have those folks. Through our normal course of action, we appointed liaisons from our commission to other groups and commissions in the city, including the Planning Arts Commission, Friendship, Friends of Woodlake Board, Transportation Committee, and the Honoring All Veterans Memorial. So now in the coming year, we'll once again get to work on prioritizing any capital improvement items, and from our work session earlier, we will be participating in the Comprehensive Parks Master Plan process that's coming up. But I'd like to take just a moment to thank all of our volunteer commissioners and encourage anyone here, anyone listening, to consider being a member of a commission. This is, I'm going into my ninth year, and final year, I guess, on this commission, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, and we have had and will have and do have very dedicated, enthusiastic people, and I think, hoping that our recommendations are of some use to the benefit of the council. And last but not least, I need to thank our staff representative, Jim Toppetssofer, and John Evans, for all their hard work. We couldn't do it without them. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted, I'm the liaison to that commission, and Reed has done a marvelous job, because it's a commission that, very vocal and very participatory in just about everything, and it's really an interesting commission, you know? When you read about what it does on paper, it sounds very boring, but once you get into it, really, it's probably the second favorite commission that the city has. And there's so much to, you know, to get involved in on a regular basis, but you do a very good job of, you know, of making sure that we all have the information and that we all have the ability to, you know, to jump in and participate, and you're very welcoming, so appreciate your hard work.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm just really looking forward to some of the work that you're going to do, because I understand with 66th Street Reconstruction, we'll have the advent of small pocket parks, and that could be very creative, and I think, first of all, that's great, because we're adding parks. Second of all, it's really cool, because they could be very neighborhood-specific, and I'm sure you'll come up with some fabulous ideas.
And we will involve the neighborhoods in those discussions.
We always do, we're really good and inclusive, so thank you, thank you for the hard work. Appreciate it.
And that's the other thing that they do, is, you know, whenever there's something going on in a park, they make sure that that neighborhood...
Knows about it.
Knows about it, and not only that, you've had meetings in parks with the neighbors, and that's really important.
He's got to get off to his meeting.
Okay, go to your meeting.
Councilmember FitzHenry, you have the next item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's my pleasure, we're going to have the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office give us an overall briefing. Sheriff Rich Stanek is not available tonight, because he's out doing good things for our county and other places, so I'll introduce Major Jeff Storm. Major?
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, for the opportunity to come out here tonight and just explain kind of what the sheriff's office is and give you a general overview. We always meet with the police chief prior to doing this, and our biggest piece that we try to do during this whole demonstration is really just to talk about cooperation, and really how law enforcement works together, and how inclusive of a law enforcement community we have within the county. My name's Jeff Storms, major at the sheriff's office, I've been with us for over 25 years. Much of what I do in the last 10 years or so since the sheriffic office, I've moved around a lot of different divisions, mostly being out of our enforcement services and also out of our communications, all of our technology needs. I also have done a lot with the jail and courts and some of the mental health stuff that you have seen throughout the news media, so we've done quite a bit of that, so there comes a great experience with this as well. PowerPoint itself, we'll go through it fairly quickly, and this is very interactive, if somebody does have a question, please throw it out at the time, it makes it much easier to move through this, but Sheriff Stanek, he's been with the county now for over, in his 10th year, obviously came from Minneapolis, elected five times in Minnesota House, prior to that, he was also Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety. There's some interesting facts, and this is where I usually like to say that we like to ask test questions after the fact, and now with an incoming commissioner, now it's even more important. There'll be a lot of different Hennepin County facts coming out tonight during our presentation. Hennepin County Sheriff's Office was incorporated in 1852, so we're a longstanding law enforcement agency, 27 different sheriffs since 1852, and only three sheriffs in the past 70 years have served as sheriff in Hennepin County. So it's basically Ryan, Omont, and McGowan, who was the most recent one before Stanek. Of that, the next slide, we're just going to go through, Hennepin County itself has about 1.2 million people, over 556 square miles, 104 named lakes and three rivers, which is one of the main purposes of the sheriff's office, one of our main state mandates, is really all bodies of water within Hennepin County, so we have a very large agency that deals with a lot of the events that happen on the lakes and rivers throughout the county. 45 local communities, which means agencies interact with at least 45 mayors and 45 different city councils, so we work very inclusive with all different parts of the city government. We want to be part of the solution, we always are trying to work, obviously, with the local government and also with local law enforcement. With Hennepin County alone, there's 37 law enforcement agencies, and that includes the State Patrol and ourselves, and along with that, we also partner with all the federal, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, DEA, ATF, ICE, all those different federal three-letter words. Obviously, as we work through this, we have two U.S. Senators in our area and two House reps, so, and obviously, one county board that we deal with that is our governing body as well, after the elected sheriff, obviously. Our leadership team, and this is just a real quick brief of it, Major Daryl Huggett, who oversees our administrative services, he's on the far left, Major Pete Dietzmann, who came over investigations as a captain within the last two years, he oversees all of our crime lab and our investigatory services, myself overseeing enforcement services, which is also our 911 communications, and also all of our technology needs, and then Tracy Martin, who is our jail and court services major, and Mike Carlson, who is our chief deputy, has day-to-day operations. One of the main things I want to hit tonight, and it's something that all law enforcement agencies are really looking at, is 21st century policing. What that means, and it's not just a buzzword of how to do work, it's a very interactive group that we've dealt with for quite a few years now, as President Obama and others have created this task force to try to look at law enforcement and say, "What are we doing right? What are we doing different? What can we do better?" This came out no less than probably a year ago. The sheriff's office is obviously dead in heat with everything that's happening throughout the country, and we're looking at, how do we do better? How do we do things the way we're doing them? Number one is, looking at all the things that we do as an agency, we are hitting the mark on almost everything. A lot of the things that came up throughout this study, which the sheriff was part of, we have already been doing for years and are looking at completing and doing in the future as well. With that, though, the comprehensive review, we became one of 15 members throughout the entire country that actually sits on a board, to make sure that other law enforcement agencies will jump on this as well. Each year, we do a strategic plan, and this includes all the goals and results of reporting of the 21st century policing, but it's truly building communities of trust, social media engagement, and items like that, which we're most critical working towards right now. So I want to get into a little bit of how our office operates, and this is the only difference between most law enforcement sheriff's offices, and it's really different, eight lines of business compared to maybe four or five lines of business for a local police department. The things that we're responsible by state statute, court security, jail, some of the warrant process, civil process, our 911 dispatch, crime lab, investigations, and our patrol in the sense that we have combined all of our patrol areas into doing civil process, warrant process, and the little bit of patrol that we do throughout the entire county. One of the main areas that we obviously deal with is our Delta Detention Facility, about 33,000 bookings each year. Richfield last year had 611 bookings within that, nationally accredited, and that's been probably since Don Omont, I would guess in the early 80s. We've been a nationally accredited jail facility. We do run two different facilities, based, both of them are downtown, recently, would have been 2001, recent for county building needs, was our new facility that was built, and we also have our old city hall building, which also houses quite a few inmates in it. Our enforcement services unit, basically, we're looking at, much of it is assisting, and it's really the, there's not enough resources within this county to do everything at all times, and obviously, force multipliers are what we work towards. So within what we do as law enforcement, we also do things such as assisting agencies with different things that are happening within a community. Some of the things that may come up in Richfield that we work with Chief Heath Thorne on, really is the different things, such as the Fourth of July, we have staff that come down for that. We have a very robust voter for violent offender task force that we work with the city of Richfield on, and I think last year alone, we'll get into some of the numbers, but I think we've recovered six or eight guns down here, as well as numerous arrests for different types of offenses for violent crimes that are occurring. One of the things that, just getting back to the enforcement side of it, we have Special Operations Division, which also made up Emergency Service Unit, which is part of our Weapons of Mass Destruction Team and some of the different things, and along with that, we do a lot with civil and warrants, like I said. So civil alone, we're dealing with almost 33,000 civil papers each year that we service, that includes evictions from houses, which we went through in 2008 all the way forward. That was one of the main things that the sheriff is actually, by state statute, must do, under court orders. Along with that, we do a lot of child picks from unruly houses or homes that are in camp or whatever it may be. We do a lot of placement with different county agencies for any type of underage children that need some type of assistance. That's one of the main purposes of our office as well. Along with that, we also do warrant service, there's approximately 20-some thousand warrants within the entire county, those are rolling warrants, that's not each year. Of that, we probably service about 18 or so thousand each year that we do ourselves, along with other law enforcement throughout the county, we do quite a few of those, and those are warrants of felon gross misdemeanor and all the different things, all the way through misdemeanors. Water Patrol, and I spent a great amount of my career out of water patrol, and I was just talking with Councilmember FitzHenry about that. I remember numerous times with his ultralight coming over the top of our building, so I think we've actually talked about that in the past, it was kind of interesting, always seeing that. But obviously, this is the one piece that is one of our jewels for the sheriff's office. We do quite a bit throughout the 104 lakes, if you recall some of the issues that happened at Big Island on Lake Minnetonka several years ago, it's not our jurisdiction, we basically are proactive in almost everything we do, and a lot of what we do is try to be very, try to correct things through verbal warnings, obviously, but some of the things that happened on Lake Minnetonka, for example, needed additional services out there. It's one of the most well-known units for water patrol around the entire nation, I still have a lot of friends and colleagues that I deal with from Lake Havasu all the way through the Lake of the Ozarks and different parts of the country, and we have model policies, model polished, I guess, that would really interact how we deal with people that are on the lake, trying to make it a very inclusive, friendly place to recreate and make it very We already hit on that piece. 911 Emergency Communications, this is one of the largest consolidated dispatch centers in the entire region, about 572,000 phone transactions in 2015, and 75%, which is a unique number, of all 911 calls are now placed from cell phones, and that's multiple cell phones throughout the entire event that may happen. Most events don't call one time, they call about 20 times from different people that are on scene, so those are different things that we deal with on that. The crime lab, which basically is utilized throughout the entire county, it's one of our jewels as well, they're located in downtown Minneapolis, right next to the new stadium. This will be one of the issues that will come up for the next several years, on relocating or trying to figure out what would happen with our crime lab. Another part of our divisions that are actually accredited as well, we have Crime Scene Investigators, which you'll see out on the street, actually picking up the crime scene evidence, taking photographs, doing the different things that they do, collecting biology and what have photographs, doing the different things that they do, collecting biology and what have you, and then we also have within the lab, one of the only accredited DNA biology labs and there's only three in the state, Anoka County, Hennepin County, and the BCA or Bureau of Criminal Apprehension. We have a full firearm section which basically does any type of tool marking and all the different types of firearms identification, for a better term, and also all the multimedia evidence that's out there. Richfield last year, 41 cases with our crime lab and 73 crime scene hours total. One of the other things that we did back in 2007 and '08 basically was create a criminal information sharing analysis unit and this is, replaced basically an older system that we had that the information received and many of the police officers from the past in here will remember this as well, we would put something out that was maybe two to three weeks old that was very non-informative, that really didn't help law enforcement get ahead of some of the crime trends. What this criminal information sharing analysis group does is actually do, they do a lot of link analysis and trying to figure out the crimes, how they're occurring, some of the different, how things are happening, and tie together all the different leads, which helps to create a better predictive science of what's going to happen next, what the person may be, and also tying together some of the different crime attributes so we can try to catch people before they're, or as they're committing crimes or try to predict where they're going to be next. Along with this, it also helps for any type of major scene you may see, instead of a police officer in a car trying to gather information, we now have a unit that will sit there, they'll gather the information and push it out to the squads. So it's been a very good use of resources for us as well and just trying to get the person on the street a little bit more information to make their decisions. Just some of the background, Richfield over 22 requests for information and Southwest Hennepin Crime Collaboration. And then our detective unit investigates criminal activity from property crime and homicide, working alongside Richfield detectives as well. And the Violent Offender Task Force, 41 arrests and five search warrants executed and six gun seasons in 2015, so that's a large amount. One of the things I want to hit tonight on especially is our drug task forces, we have personnel on drug task forces throughout the county. And why this is really important today and what you're seeing in the newspaper and you're seeing probably about three weeks ago, City of Anoka had two deaths from fentanyl. We had a lot of different deaths and a lot of different opiate overdoses over the last several years as well. One thing that we have done within the county is we've created drop boxes for different parts of the county to try to get all the opiates, all the medicine that's prescribed by doctors off the street because that's the gateway to get into some of these other illicit drugs. Some of the things that we're seeing though, the trending really is of the fentanyl itself is how dangerous it is and it's the one thing that we do quite a bit of education on, 400 times more potent than what heroin is. This is the type of stuff that even law enforcement on scenes, if they're touching it without gloves on, can actually kill that person. It's a very addictive and destructive drug that obviously we're trying to keep off the streets and try to keep people in check on how they're using it, but it's very cheap to bring in from different countries. It's hard to detect at times and like I said, it's deadly to any type of, whether it's our canines going through or whether it's police personnel going through, it can be deadly. Along with that, obviously we've included within our patrol vehicles and all our different detectives, all our different task forces is Narcan. Narcan's a drug that will actually help bring back people that are suffering from an opiate overdose. Within the last, I would say about four years since we've introduced that, three and a half years, we've had at least four saves within the Sheriff's Office alone, I think metrowide, we're probably upwards of 25 or 30 saves from law enforcement perspective, which is a huge number. And that's something that we continue to do as well, it's just good business, but a lot of it's about education and I would just encourage people that have young kids especially is try to encourage them to, A, talk to their parents about things that are happening. These drugs, they don't even realize how dangerous they are and how quickly they can destroy lives, so parents in here definitely be aware of that. Just some of the things that we talked about here is basically heroin overdose deaths, heroin overdose deaths and trending down in Hennepin County, but we've seen an increase this year and that's definitely because of the fentanyl, but 56 in 2013 all the way down to 49 through September of this year, so more than likely will surpass what we have in the last several years. And that's with all the different, nine different drop boxes we have and different types of task forces that are out there, so that's one of the things that we continue to hit and do a lot of different meetings on. Our Volunteer Services Division, this is one of our very proud groups as well and we have well over 120 special deputies that work out in our different areas, whether it be water patrol, whether it be out in our communications area that help dispatch scenes during emergencies. It can be also people that are out on the road that are working alongside law enforcement that are reserve officers as well. Over 20,000 hours last year alone out of this group, Richfield had over 48 hours used. And, you know, I'll go through this stuff fairly quickly, it's obviously any law enforcement agency, they have internal, external training, reserve schools, a lot of different things and this is part of our active shooter training and all the different things we're seeing in law enforcement. Obviously, we train extremely hard within the agency and we try to get as much training in for everybody that we can. One of the last things we're going to hit on tonight is really our community engagement team and this is another group that we started probably in 2007, started as basically two personnel that were assigned there and we're up to about seven now total. And this is basically different leaders from different groups, we have several groups that we go and talk with on a regular basis, we have councils that are set up where we can actually get some input and feedback from the community on things that we could do better, things that the community is experiencing, even as simple as some communication issues where we can sit down and talk to them about how law enforcement interacts with their This is one of the highest priorities that we do have and we've received numerous awards. Just the most recent one was out at the International Association of Chiefs of Police for an anti-terrorism award that was received by our community engagement group for some of the work that they've done in trying to identify some of that, so that was a very, very good thing. This slide basis, just some of the crime in Hennepin County and how it trended down for several years and we're starting to see an uptick now, so this is where the vigilance between law enforcement and partnerships and that force multiplier really needs to be applied and just continuing to work together which will help overall. With that, I know I went through that fairly quickly, I know you guys have a busy agenda tonight, but I would be definitely open for any questions you may have.
I guess I don't have a question, but I just want to thank you because I know that, you know, 4th of July is one of our biggest celebrations here and you folks have always come down and we've had some years where it's been a little bit more tense and you've been down here helping us out with that and I can't thank you enough because this is a family event and we wanted to keep this a family event and because of having extra people, extra forces here from the Sheriff's Department really helped us out, so thank you for helping us make this a family, community, family event and a safer community, we appreciate that kind of support.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
And I want to thank you, 30 years I worked, Hennepin County's always been, you know, best ever, your crime lab's been second to none in that and all I can say, you were very good partners then and you're still good partners now, so.
Thank you very much and like I said, it is a true partnership between your Chief of Police as well and really respect what each other does on a day-to-day basis, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, thanks for the presentation. We'll move on to hats off to hometown hits and I'm going to start over with Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a lovely Veterans Day at our Vets Memorial, it was kind of my pledge after, we forgot one Veterans Day that we're never going to do it again and so what we did is, three of us were there, and it wasn't a big crowd, but what we do is they add names as time goes on and they had added 13 new names to the tablets. And our goal was to at least have everybody's name in that tablet said once, out loud in public so somebody could hear it. So we had a short ceremony and we named the 13 new names and we did our taps and we let the mayor let it, one of the cannons, so we did our cannon salute. And it's a lot of fun just for us even though it's small, so next year if you want to come, it's almost dark when we did, we did it at 5 o'clock this year and I think that's probably a good time to do it next year. So put it on your calendar, we'll be there again next year. The other item we wanted to talk about is our liquor store on Cedar is open and I'm glad they put the big sign up and so I went through there and had to buy some beer, of course.
Were you there first opening too, Edwina?
You didn't know it was open yet, or?
Well, I tried to do the Lindell one, that's in my ward.
No, it, well, okay, we got that, okay, ward liquor stores here.
She's got two in her ward, you notice.
Yes, yes.
It really looked nice, it's really comfortable feeling walking in and the coolers are huge, I noticed you can't buy a warm beer now, so that's a good thing. And I really like to check outs and stuff, so I think it was a good move and I think we got it done in record time. I know we still have an issue with the parking lot, but I think we can work by that, but with all the construction that's going up over there and that, I kind of wonder how busy we're going to be and if we built it too small, but it is a very nice store, so I wanted to mention that, so. And that's all I have for now.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Well, first, I want to thank Councilmember Fitz Henry for organizing the Veterans Day celebration and I hope that you'll come back and remind us every year and we'll do our best to obviously remind folks as well, but I just think that's so great that you're going to make sure that that happens every year. The other thing I wanted to mention, Councilmember Garcia did mention the bright spot of our election. For other folks, the election result has not been, you know, a bright spot, folks have been thinking about that. I think it's an election that a lot of people were, they wanted it to be over because it was particularly nasty and divisive and beyond divisive for some members of our community that felt targeted based on their race, based on their gender, based on their religion, and that's not right. And so I just think that in Richfield, we have an opportunity to communicate to the community that we see you, we hear you, and we're going to stand with you, all of you, to build a better future here in Richfield. And so I just wanted to mention that and suggest that at our meeting in December, we put together a resolution that we can pass that communicates our values of inclusion in Richfield and stand up against some of the hate that folks are feeling. So I would hope that other councilmembers would be, and that's something that we can take through the Human Rights Commission and work on some. And one other thing I did want to mention that Navigate Minnesota is hosting a community forum for Spanish-speaking people to process the election results and that's going to be at 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the Church of the Assumption this Sunday.
Thank you. And just to your point, I wanted to mention, I'm wearing a safety pin tonight in memory and that's something that people have started to see on Facebook. This is against hate and racism, so just saying that I'm a safe person, if somebody is being attacked out there in the community, I'm a safe person to come to, I'm going to stand up for you and help you. And so this is the safety pin campaign that started out and I support your efforts to have a resolution. Richfield is an inclusionary city, it always has been, and I talked to Steve Unowski and we are not experiencing some of the issues in the schools that others are. We just have to remind ourselves, it doesn't matter how you feel politically, one way or the other, we're all the family of human beings and citizens and residents here and some of us like what happened and some of us don't, but either way, for one thing, there are a lot of people hurting, throwing it in people's faces is not the right thing to do. I think we all have to move forward in a positive direction and give everybody a chance to prove themselves as a public official, no matter what side of the party you're on. And we have to respect the office and we have to be civil to each other. As Councilmember Garcia said, being positive and civil is something that I've always been striving for, we all need to be doing that to each other as well, so I support your efforts. And I too enjoy the Veterans Day and I promised, so long as you're there, Tom, I'm going to be there. And we've been through some rain and sleet and snow and lightning, all kinds of things and when we have read those names and we have stood there out in the cold and done that, thank you for always reminding me. I was also at a Veterans Day celebration at the STEM School, I'm invited every year and it seems like all the schools are now doing it because after that I got several invites to our local schools and it was so wonderful to see that and they invite the veterans in our community to come in, grandparents or neighbors or anything. And so not only do the kids learn the whole civic lesson of what their veterans did and how they served and what their country means, they actually meet somebody who served and then they have a reception for those veterans afterwards, so it was a wonderful, beautiful experience to be there and the kids sang to the veterans and everything, so it was just, it was a wonderful time, I really enjoyed it and they presented colors and everything, so they had a color guard. The other thing that I was at with Councilmember Fitz Henry is coats for kids. They, the fire department did a phenomenal fundraiser and I've asked them to come in here and talk about it because to find a way that if people in this community would like to give to that, they do raise some of the money, but I'm sure they could use more, they bought kids for everyone in one of the elementary schools here, no matter what kid you were, whether you needed a coat or not, every kid, so no kid felt left out, no kid felt like they were poor and someone was wealthy, every kid got a coat. And they were beautiful coats and the kids loved them, I had several pictures with them. City Manager was there, our police chief, the fire department, excuse me, was there. We had a lot of fun being there and it was a lot of fun to see those kids. One of the other things is Xcel Energy is in our community changing out lights, they are putting in LED lights, over 350 lights will be changed out and probably are done by now because they said it took literally five to seven minutes to change out each light. So some of you in your community will know that some of your lights are changed and there'll be a whiter light, you'll notice that, and now not all our lights are changed out because some of them are city-owned, but the city is looking into our program of when we'll do that at a later date. But it was really nice to see that and I appreciate it's going to save the city some money too, so we're always in looking for ways to save dollars. It's not as significant as people think because we actually have to pay for the labor to change those lights out too, so it's not just all the whole savings, but it is a considerable savings on our bill, so that's all I have. What do you have, Councilmember Garcia?
Well, I just want to say amen to your remarks about what's going on after the election, excuse me. You know, I wanted to talk about the liquor store on Cedar, you know, that was, when I represented that ward, that was my liquor store then, and then I moved to the middle ward and lo and behold, I'm blessed with two liquor stores. And then the west side only has one, two, so, but it's interesting because the other day I sent my husband to the Lindell store to look for, you know, for an item and he just, he talked to the manager, he couldn't find it, he just, and so the manager said, well, I'll call Fillmore, the director. So he called up Bill Fillmore and Joe explained it, this is what Edwina wants and whatever and whatever. And Fillmore said, okay, it's on this shelf, it's, you know, I mean, just, I mean, can you believe that? I mean, that really shows, you know, that the man knows his liquor stores and he does, he does a good job and, but it's, you know, and I appreciate the liquor stores.
You just turned your mic off.
That's what we use for our park and rec, those monies and so they are a very valuable asset to the city of Richfield. And so, you know, it's great to have them.
Yeah, I want to say, you know, there was an article in the Sunday paper about liquor stores being hurt and Edwina especially is being hurt by some of the big box where we're not seeing it quite so much, we're far enough away that we're not. And I mean, I saw a lot of ads that Edwina is also running too, that, you know, the proceeds from your liquor store help your parks, that's true here too. We have all these beautiful exchange of park equipment for our kids and the upgrades and everything we do to our parks, significant upgrades, you know, to tens of thousands of dollars and that comes out of the proceeds of the liquor stores, our pool and those amenities around the pool, we have all these great things, so just so you know, when you go out to spend your holiday dollars, please spend them in the Richfield liquor stores.
Well, the other thing too is that, you know, our suburb, Minneapolis, frequents our liquor store all the time and so that's why we do such good business, because, you know, they come, they cross the border, come over here and so we appreciate Minneapolis.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, our largest suburb.
We'll drink to that.
Not yet. I'll ask the council to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The agenda is passed. We have the consent calendar, City Manager, a long one.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, tonight we have a very long consent calendar and I'm going to try to read through it without coughing and stammering and putting on my glasses, and so here we go. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved and require no further action. So, we start off with item A, consideration of the approval of the renewal of the contract with Chief's Towing Incorporated for Public Safety Towing Services for December 1, 2016 through November 30, 2017. Item B is consideration of the approval of the first reading of an ordinance amendment to the Richfield City Code Appendix D, and that's the permit fee schedule, and schedule a public hearing and second reading for December 13, 2016. Item C is the consideration of the approval of a second amendment to the consent decree in the state of Minnesota by City of Minneapolis et al. versus Metropolitan Airports Commission et al., Hennepin County Case Number 27 CV OS S474. Item D is consideration of the approval of a second reading of an amendment to the city zoning ordinance that modifies regulations related to outdoor animal relief areas and a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance, and consideration of a resolution granting a conditional use permit amendment and variances to allow in animal business within accessory outdoor relief area at 6244 Cedar Avenue. Item E is consideration of the approval of a request for new therapeutic massage enterprise license for Health Fitness Corporation Doing Business as Health Fitness located at 7601 Penn Avenue South, which is Building D of the Best Buy Corporate Campus. Now, here comes some really long ones. Item F, consideration of the approval of the setting of a public hearing to be held on December 13, 2016 for the consideration of the renewal of on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for 2017 for El Tejaban Mexican Grill LLC DBA, El Tejaban Mexican Grill, Thompson's Fireside Pizza Incorporated DBA Fireside Foundry, GM Richfield LLC DBA, or I should say Doing Business As, Four Points by Sheraton Minneapolis Airport, Frenchman's Pub Incorporated DBA Frenchman's, VPC Richfield Pizza LLC DBA Giordano's of Richfield, Willshire Restaurants LLC Doing Business as Houlihan's Restaurant and Bar, Paizan Incorporated Doing Business as Con's Mongolian Barbecue, Lynn 65 LLC Doing Business as Lynn 65 Kitchen and Bar, Pizza Luce 7 Incorporated Doing Business as Pizza Luce, Minneapolis Richfield American Legion Post 435, and Fred Babcock VFW Post 5555 Doing Business as Four Nichols Food and Drink. Item G is consideration of the approval of the setting of a public hearing to be held on December 13 for the consideration of the renewal of on-sale wine and on-sale 32% malt liquor licenses for 2017 for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC Doing Business as Chipotle Mexican Grill, Devani's Incorporated Doing Business as Devani's Pizza and Hot Hoagies, Joyce Potaya Thai Restaurant LLC Doing Business as Joyce Potaya Thai Restaurant, Minnesota Junior Hockey Group LLC Doing Business as Minnesota Magicians Located at the Richfield Ice Arena, My Burger Operations LLC Doing Business as My Burger, The Noodle Shop Company Colorado Incorporated DBA Noodles and Company at two locations, Patrick's French Bakery Incorporated Doing Business as Patrick's Bakery and Cafe, Henry Two DBA Red Chinese, Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant. Item H is consideration of the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 13, 2016 for the consideration of the renewal of pawnbroker and secondhand goods dealer licenses for 2017 for the University Cash Company LLC Doing Business as Avi's Pawn and Jewelry and Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated. Item I, consideration of the approval of a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of property owned by the city of Richfield to the Richfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Item J is consideration of the approval of the purchase of a fire rescue truck from Custom Fire for $179,894 plus taxes and licenses for 2017. Item K is consideration of the approval of a resolution ordering the abatement of conditions creating a hazardous building and a public health and safety nuisance existing at 7144 Fourth Avenue South, Richfield, Minnesota. Item L is consideration of the approval of a resolution ordering the abatement of conditions creating a hazardous building and a public health and safety nuisance existing at 7301 Garfield Avenue South, Richfield, Minnesota. And finally, item M, and that would be the consideration of the approval of the first reading of a transitory ordinance authorizing the conversion of the existing R22 direct refrigeration system at the Richfield Ice Arena and scheduling of a public hearing and second reading for December 13, 2016. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar, and as you may imagine, December 13 is gonna be one jam-packed meeting.
Yeah, they're all gonna be those public hearings, yeah.
Yes, it is.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Figure out how to put as many of those together as we can.
Absolutely will.
That's gonna be a long meeting.
Yes, it will.
Okay, all right, well, and we move on. Item eight, Councilmember Howard.
I have...
Hold it, seven, we have. Oh, they moved all my things around on me, okay. You have, you have item seven now.
I have seven, okay.
Yes.
What I have, I have the consideration of a resolution approving the contract with the Labor and Trades Local 49 for the period of January 1, 2017 through December 31, 2018, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. City staff has completed labor negotiations with the Labor and Trades Local 49. The provisions of the 2017-2018 labor agreement cover all of the employees in this union, which consists of 32 positions. The two-year contract provides a wage adjustment of 2.75% in 2017 and a wage adjustment of 3% in 2018. It also includes an equity adjustment in both contract years to the top steps of the LT1 and LT2 pay grades in order to bring those wages more in line with other similarly-sized metro-area cities. This was done after a thorough analysis of metro wages by staff. The other provisions of the tentative agreement include a 25 cent per month increase toward employee single dental coverage, there is a re-opener provision for insurance for 2018, and an increase to the public works certificate pay in 2017 to 95 cents an hour and $1 an hour in 2018. So, my motion, my motion is to adopt the resolution approving the provisions of the 2017-2018 labor agreement with the Labor and Trades Local 49 bargaining unit and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Good job.
Yes. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we had our general election November the 8th in conjunction with the state general and presidential election, and Richfield had three council seats, wards one, two, and three that were on the general election ballot, and we're here to certify those, those local elections. In Ward Number One, which was a real squeaker for Pat Elliott, you know, he just...
Not here to face the music after there's 100...
I know, by the skin of his teeth, he came in, though. And so, Pat Elliott was the, was the council member once again for Ward One, and in Ward Two, I was re-elected council member, and in Ward Three, we have a newcomer, and that is Maria Reagan Gonzalez. So, we will have a new council member and a departing council, two departing council people, so, and we welcome Ms. Gonzalez on board. So, I will, at this point, make, I will move that we adopt the resolution determining the results of the city general election held Tuesday, November the 8th, 2016.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Can I add something to it? I'm sorry.
Oh, here she goes, yes, yes, you can.
Well, you know, we had, we had 22,838 registered voters. Of those registered voters, we had 18,568 people that showed up. That is impressive, very impressive. That is 81.3% of the registered voters, turnout.
Amazing.
Good for us.
Better than the most of the nation, I can tell you that.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
And that goes to show, you know, the government, local government is, I contend it's the best form of government, because it's local.
And it works.
And it works.
Please, city manager.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, if I might just add to that, thanks for bringing that out, the fact that we had, you know, over 80% turnout is really astounding. When you think of Minnesota, it's always the state that typically leads the nation in voter turnout, at around 70%, 70%, and we're kind of, we're held as the model of voter turnout, and Richfield's 81% in this particular election. That is astounding.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'd like to add, if you look at it, too, absent, the early voting, I think helped a lot. I noticed when I went to the polls, there was hardly any line or anything, so I, hats off to the staff that had all them days of early voting, but I think that's why we got 81%.
Yeah.
And hats off to the, to the, to our precinct volunteers.
Yeah, the judges and everybody.
Oh, and there was a lot of high school students that served as election judges this year, which I thought, which is great to see.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get more help, I think, for early voting because of how fast it went.
Most definitely, we're gonna do, yeah. That was beyond our wildest imagination of the kind of turnout we were expecting.
Yeah.
But I have, the city clerk's office did a really superb job in this election. I know that there were, you know, even with as well as elections run in Minnesota, I know even in the Twin Cities area, there were some areas that had, had election issues, but Richfield came through, just came through fine, and that's a tribute to Beth Van Whoos, the city clerk, and the people that she has, like Carrie working with her, and people we bring back who have retired and come back and work for us, like Nancy Gibbs and Nancy Straff, people like that, so.
So, the next is an item for consideration. This is a consideration of a resolution authorizing the refunding of the $9,480,000 Geo Capital Improvement Plan Bond Series 2008A dated December 23, 2008 with the $6,130,000 Geo Refunding Bond Series 2016C. That's a council memo that we had, number 80. On September 13, 2016, city council meeting, the council passed parameters resolutions with established a sale of a committee with the mayor, city manager, and the finance manager for the purpose of awarding the sale of the Series 2016C bonds. With the city council approval, the pricing committee would be authorized and directed with the advice of our city municipal advisor to review proposals for the sale of the bond based on the following parameters. The principal amount of the bond shall not exceed $6,305,000. The true interest cost of the bond shall not exceed 1.9%. The present value of the debt service or interest cost savings reduction shall be at least 9% of the debt service of the refunded bond. The sale date of the Series 2016C bond is November 15, so that was earlier today when I was here at the city hall. If the proposals received are within the established parameters, the pricing committee is authorized to direct the selected best proposal and award the sale to the respective bidder. However, subsequent to the presidential elections, interest rates within the bond market have increased significantly. Consequently, the bids received on the refunding of the Series 2008A have exceeded one of the parameters established by the parameters resolution passed by the city council in September. Accordingly, then, since, since it's now scheduled city council meeting on November 15, the same date as the sale of the 2016C bonds, staff is recommending rejecting the parameters resolution and bringing the award of the sale of the 2016C bonds to the city council for consideration. The recommended sale will still result in interest savings to the city in the amount of $776,547, a reduced par amount of the bond of $6,130,000, and the minimum net present value savings required by Minnesota state law will be exceeded, so it's more than the 9%. Accordingly, the Series 2016C bonds are being issued to provide funds sufficient for an advanced crossover funding on February 1, 2019. The par amount of the Series 2008A to be called on the call date is $6,65,000. Bids on the 2016C general obligation refunding bond are due in the office of the Ellers Associations. On Tuesday, November 15, a representative from Ellers is here and will be addressing the city council shortly at our meeting. They are recommending this, that we look at the successful bidder and review and the attached documents and provide information that's absent from this resolution and to move forward. Following Ellers and Associates' recommendation, it would be appropriate for the city council to award the bond sale to the qualified buyer and undertake other related actions as necessary as delineate in approval, approving of the new resolution. An anticipated closing of the 2016C bond is scheduled December 15, 2016. So, at this time, I'd ask Rebecca, I see you here, please come up and talk to us about this. It was, it was quite one of those mornings where, "Are you kidding me?" But it wasn't that bad a news, really, we're saving a considerable amount of dollars, just the parameter of the percentage is a little bit different.
Exactly, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. I will say just a couple points, I, you've covered most of my, my key points, my message this evening, so thank you. We did receive seven bids, though, which we were happy with and thought was a great tribute to the interest that the underwriting community has for the city of Richfield. UMB Bank out of Kansas City was the low bidder, again, as you mentioned, with the interest, true interest cost of 2.03%. One other point, we typically talk about the rating, and just to note, to remind you, these bonds were rated, but they were included in the rating that was done for the 2016B bonds a couple weeks ago, so they continue to have the double A-plus rating from Standard and Coors. I know that you've touched on the results of this, and the one parameter that wasn't met was that the true interest cost did exceed 1.9, as I mentioned, with the interest cost being 2.03. Basically, what that means is that the savings was reduced by roughly $40,000 from what we had anticipated at the time when we called for the sale in September. You will note that the par amount also was reduced because of a premium bid, so it went from the anticipated size of $6.3 million to $6.1 million, which will also help with, help with that interest savings. I'm happy to answer any questions, but as the mayor said, we are recommending awarding to UMB Bank at the true interest cost of 2.03. We do feel it is a very good result, even though we were a little bit off on, on the one parameter that was adopted.
And I think some of the conversations around the table when we opened the bids was that, you know, the bond market is fluctuating considerably right now, and we ought to lock in a good rate, because we believe interest rates at the federal level will be going up, and that will definitely affect the bonds coming forward, so we think we ought to lock in a good bond rate right now. I see consensus, head shaking. So, at this time, I'll make a motion to approve the attached resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bond Series 2016C in the original aggregate principal amount of $6,130,000, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, providing for their payment, providing for their escrow and investment of the proceeds thereof, providing for the redemption of bonds refunded thereby, and rescinding a prior resolution of the city.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. We have the city manager's report. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before I go on to my report, I just want to remind folks that, as you mentioned, Mayor, we had, excuse me, this was a two-part sale, we had the B bonds, we sold first, and now the C bonds. Rebecca, maybe help me remember, but when you put the two of these bonds together, we're talking, and I'm not counting, we did a buy-down of about a half a million dollars, but I'm thinking the total savings, and I'm pretty sure I'm right, is at least, at least a million and a half dollars, at least a million and a half dollars from these two bond sales. That's, that's some real money, so that's gonna help us with our debt service going forward.
That's wonderful.
Just a couple of quick things. Item one, we are, we have talked about, you know, the implementation of the renaming of 76th and 77th Streets, and, you know, we've got some information put together, and we sent out a council memo about a week ago that had most of what we have, and so I'm just trying to gauge when the council wants to start talking about doing something about that. You know, we're a little bit delayed right now in the... You know, we're a little bit delayed right now in the, in the underpass while we get some clarity on, on the $10 million. And we could start, you know, working on this, tentatively on the renaming on December 13 study session. And we could start then and just start talking about, you know, some kind of a timetable. And then we'd have, you know, the standing city council be able to finish off that process if you, if you wish to do that. I assume, and I hope I'm not making an assumption incorrectly, that the council still wants to proceed with the naming of that International Boulevard, correct?
I think that makes sense.
I think we all want to move forward, yeah.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, then we'll make sure we do that. And secondly, it's never too early to start thinking about commission interviews because, you know, we only have, we have one council meeting left. While we have the Truth in Taxation, that's on December 6, but that's just a single-purpose item. Then we have our December 13 meeting. But then after that, we're basically done, and save for an HRA meeting in December. But we need to start thinking about commission interview times. In the past, we've, you know, we've done some on Saturdays, and I don't know what the pleasure of the council is, and I'm not asking for dates tonight, but I'm just asking for council to start thinking about it, obviously. Mayor and Councilmember Fitz Henry, you don't need to think about it because...
Well, we'll think about it, but not...
You can think about it, but you won't have to be there.
Yeah, so that means no, no coffee, juice, and special treats, guys.
I got to step up.
That's going to really, that's going to put a crimp in it. But just start, I just ask council to start thinking about that because when we hit in January, we're going to, we're going to want to have some dates kind of, you know, planned because those interviews are going to have to come fast. We have openings, we're going to have to start filling, okay? And that's all I have.
Okay. You have the next item.
Yes. Like I said, the mayor always assigns me the heavy-duty ones, so I'll move claims and payroll.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. You're going to get paid. Seeing no further action, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.